Okay, call the special city council meeting order Monday, August 30th. Roll call. Kirby Woina.
Tom Marslick.
David Paradise.
Sam Solars.
Nicole Andrew.
Wayne McCurey.
Jessica Bonnwell.
Wendy Manson.
Michael Summerpump.
Okay, the new quote for the City Hall parking lot?
Well, the only thing they can do right now, I mean, they could dig it up and triple the money, or just mill it down two inches and repave it and strip it. Might crack in a couple of years, but we fill the cracks, it'll still last quite a while.
What was the original quote? Was it 80,000?
Yeah, it was like 80 or 85.
And I just figured they had to mill it down like four inches, like, oh, we shaped the gravel and it didn't work that way.
Because there was eight inches of asphalt.
Yep, and there was nothing but ratchet clay underneath.
This was an old MinDOT building, so the state of Minnesota owned this, so whenever it needed to be fixed, they just put another layer on.
And I just got word they can't do it yet this year.
Yeah.
So squeeze it in.
I don't know if you guys know, but the property right back here, this house that sits back here that's abandoned, we own it. The city owns it. We bought it when the guy wanted to sell it with the intent that eventually this would all become like a city hall complex, put up a new city hall. So if we can make the parking lot last 10 years, you would end up probably digging up at a point when you build a new city hall anyway.
Take the building, they won't do a decent job.
Because you gotta take down these sheds and take out that ravine or those whatever's over here where that other driveway is, level it all out, so it would all come out anyway. So if you can get 10 years out of it, you're probably looking at it, I mean, it's probably worth it.
Yeah.
How long do they think it's gonna last?
Depends, it's like any road. Two inches is usually what they mill it over then, so. Except all the cracks that are here might eventually show back up, being the concrete or the black top is so thick. But you fill them in, you got a good black top, good top going down there, should hold up.
I make a motion that we go ahead and, well, my further to go ahead and pave our parking lot per the $55,000 proposal.
I will second.
Further discussion?
I do have a question on item number four on there. It says all prices valid through October 1st. Do we know what'll be done by then?
That we don't know, but the prices will still be good.
I think that means as long as we sign this before.
We sign this, the prices are good.
Any further discussion? Ms. Andreyov.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. You know how soon it'll start?
It'll... Just like they were gonna do this year because I told them that they couldn't do this year, but they're not gonna do it. They said they need it done.
2022 proposed budget and levy.
Okay, so the first part of this in your packet is the revenue budget worksheet and expenditure budget worksheet. So because this is just the preliminary budget and levy, it does not include any of the enterprise funds, which is all the water, sewer, that kind of stuff. It only includes, it only includes the accounts that actually affect the levy with the state economy. So that's all you're getting in this packet, so I don't know if you've had a chance to look at your revenue or expenditure, if anybody's got any questions on any of that. Tried to put a few notes in there, like on the first page it says, under Miss Laney's revenues, we opted to, we used to budget nothing, we opted to 2,500 because we'll be closing out the garbage fund. Now that the Randys does it, we'll be moving all that out of there, so we had to make a space someplace for cleanup day. So we put it in, expenditures we put into the public works and the revenue we just put into our general fund, which is public works is part of. So that's, we budgeted 2,500 that we're gonna take in from cleanup day. On page two, the transfer out of the other, from other funds is 8,500. We always transfer 6,000 from EDA to pay for part of Jess's wages and 2,500 out of the fire department to pay for mine, which will not be Michael's, for doing all their payables and all that kind of stuff. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much straightforward. A lot of it's the same as other years, not a whole lot of change. The only thing that we probably changed was we now have a new debt service, which is going to be the 305 fund, which is going to be the bond that we just approved for the downtown improvement project. This year, our 2022, we'll only be paying interest. The amount that's being certified to the county says we should be levying 350 or 60,000, but we didn't. We're only gonna levy 130,000 this year because we only gotta pay the interest part of it. We can make the rest of it up along the way over the next 20 years rather than hitting them so hard, hitting you guys so hard the very first year, and since we don't need it until 2023 because then the next bond down, the 307 bond, will drop off. It lasts payments in 2022. So there'll be another 240,000 right there that we can use. So our 200,000, I think, is what we've been levying. So slowly build that up. So you'll have 200,000 from this bond, you'll have 130,000 that we're already levying this year. So rather than hitting everybody so hard in one year, we'll just roll it up over the parts of the years. So that's just kind of the revenue. Like I said, otherwise, nothing real major. The difference, we always just put into our general capital fund, which is the 401 fund, to make sure that it's built up for any projects that are coming up. And then the next section is the work, the expenditure budget, so that's what we say we need to run this part of the city, not the, not the enterprise funds, but the public works, police department, parks, this office, all the, all the general things. Nothing new really there either, other than the bond. Otherwise, everything else was pretty much status quo. We did add, under the public works, under street repair and maintenance, 80,000, we always budget for seal coating. We added another 5,000 to that to start, because I know in finding zoning, they're looking at probably changing the sidewalk ordinance instead of residents paying for it, the city would start covering, fixing some of them. So we thought we better start putting some money there for that. Otherwise, anything else is pretty much the same, with the exception of the new bond. In the, in the 401 fund, we, we put in there, we said $75,000 to recodify our city code. So you, your city code has to be codified every so often. Ours was done, I think, and we didn't look, I think it's 2005 or '06. So every time there's been like an ordinance amendment or anything been done, it's just sitting out there as an amendment to the original city code. So at some point, you go back and say, okay, we need to recodify our code now and bring all of that in. So we put 75,000 in there. I don't know how much it is. I know when we did it in 2005, it was pretty spendy then already. So we just, we put that in there for now. Hopefully, it's enough to cover it or at least get started on it so that we can get the city code where it needs to be without having all the amendments floating around all over. We put $100,000 in motor vehicles, so we have a $30,000 payment on our existing plow truck right now. The other 70,000, we put in there for a new plow truck. Let's start building up a fund for that. There are like 260 or 50,000. And then under the computer equipment, we put 25,000. Our laser fiche scanner is our original scanner from when we started doing laser fiche about 10 or 12 years ago. So that's a little outdated. It does paper slides. It doesn't really do much else. So we looked at, we're not sure how much they are. But whatever we don't spend in this, it just stays in this fund to use for road projects or anything else coming up. So that's just kind of a general overall. If anybody has any questions at all on it, we'd be happy to answer them. The next page is net tax capacity. Net, net tax capacity is basically the, the market value of all the property in the city of Montrose, the taxable market, marketable property, I should say. And the tax capacity is like 1% of the total amount of, of our taxable property. It's always an estimate because we won't get the final number. Actually, we don't get a final number until the next year, but they'll have a really good idea by November, October, November. So we'll know clear more where we're at by the time we do the final budget in November. That gets approved at the December council meeting when we hold the truth and taxation hearing. So I just kind of took the difference from last year to this, from 2021 to 2020, kind of averaged it out, looked at how many building permits we did in 2020 because it always takes a year for it to catch up. So permits that were done in 2020 will be for 2022, basically. Came up with an estimate. So then on the next page, this is what I did. These are three property statements from people in Montrose, and I just kind of filled properties with different values, and I increased them based on what I said our taxable capacity was going up by, so like by a percentage. And then I just calculated what the tax rate would be based on the fact that if we did an increase in taxes of 100,000, 80,000, or kept it flat at 65,506, we'd give it a flat rate of, of rate of 51.61. So that would be the impact on people's taxes based on the value of their houses. So, I mean, generally, your taxes go up a little bit because your mark, your taxable market value goes up. But we try, you know, without, we try not to raise our taxes too much so that it doesn't tax people right out of town. But there again, you just have to make sure you're able to cover your expenses too going forward, so. So what I did was I just said at 100,000, our tax rate would be 52.83%. That's how it would affect each one of the properties. At 80,000, our tax rate would be 52.12%, and to keep it flat at 51.61%, would be only a $65,000 increase. And that, that of course, could change based on what our tax capacity comes in at. I'm guessing the one in the middle with the 189,000, which I said would go to 196, that's probably pretty close to a lot of the value of the homes. That one and the third one. There's probably not a whole lot that are at 120,000, but some of the older ones in town are. So then on the, the next page is where it tells you how we calculate your tax, and that's where I, when I was talking about the different percentages. So I said where the one we're considering is the 1,191,000, which was a $100,000 increase over last year. I just said our estimated tax capacity is at 2,800,000 compared to 2,695. So approximately about a 4%, a 4.7% increase. So our tax rate would go to 52.83%. And then it tells you how you tell, how you calculate your property tax. So if you kind of know the value of your house, you could go home and, you know, determine what your tax would be based on these different percentages. This was just a rough estimate. And then that, the last couple pages are what actually goes to the county. Once we certify it, this is what goes off to the county, and I just gave you the three scenarios, what it would look like at the different levels. So basically, everything stays the same with the exception of the capital improvement. So the capital improvement each, so at 100,000, our capital improvement budget requirement is 349,324. At 80,000, it goes down to 329,000, and at 65, it goes down to 314,000. So it depends on how much money you want to put into your capital improvement. So this would go to you, to you at your meeting in September, at your September council meeting, and you would approve it and be certified to the county based on whichever of these scenarios you want us to present. I'm gonna tell you, we were talking about this before, but there's one thing you need to know is that you set your preliminary budget or your preliminary levy, you could always lower it before you final it in December. So this is a preliminary certification that goes to the council or to the county or proposed. Then you'll do, you'll do a final one at your September meeting when you have your truth and taxation hearing, and then we'll certify a final one to the county. You can always lower it. The only way you can raise it is to petition to the state. So you want to go in at your proposed at the point where you think, yes, we better do this. If something changes and we know we can lower it a little, we can always lower it, but we, you gotta keep in mind that you can't raise it unless you petition to the state and you have to have a really good reason why. So. That was just one thing I wanted to remind everybody because I know some of you guys haven't been at, at one before. So I guess with that, any questions, anybody has? Anything you want me to go over again? Anything you want me to explain to you more? That's kind of a lot in a few minutes, but.
Wendy, what, which funds are involved in the, on the proposed levy, levy certification? When you look at the 19 fund debt service?
So if you go to, go to expenditure budget worksheet, and you go to the 300s.
Yeah, 303, 307, 308.
Yep, yep. So it is 303. So the, the 19 is 303. No, I'm sorry, not 303. The 303 is actually the 60,000 that's down below where it says highway.
Oh, okay.
The 305 fund, the 307 fund, and the 313 fund. Not all of it, even in, in this amount here, actually, it might be easier if you go to, that, that shows our bond payments. If you go to the revenue part of it, to the, the 303 and the 30, or 305, 307, 313, it tells you how much is coming from the taxes. So the 305 fund, 130,940 is coming from taxes. In the 307, 109,000 is coming from taxes. In the 313, 71,000 is coming from taxes, 71,244. And in the 314, 40,757. So that totals up to the 480s. And then that 60,000 is our debt service for the Montrose Meadows bond that we have, which is something we might want to talk about too while we're talking on budget. We owe, I'll call, I can call the bank if you guys are interested at all. It's, it's a bond that we took out just actually through Citizen State Bank, Northern Securities with us. So it's a, it's actual general obligation bond. But it's a short-term bond with the bank. I want to say maybe seven years, but we're down to about 200 and, do you remember what we came up with, 230, 240? We might want to consider paying that off because we're gonna be using that, I mean, we got money to transfer that's coming from the, that garbage fund. We've got money in our general, in our general fund. We have money in our cash fund there. So might be something we want to consider paying off. We'd save about $11,000 in interest. Then that 60,000 that we've got here for, that we levy for could obviously be, we'll never get rid of it. I mean, this line would go away, but we've got 60,000 sitting there then that we can use somewhere, which we could put into that other debt service fund. So there again, it would start, you know, we wouldn't have to, when we have to start paying the 300 and some thousand dollar bond, there's not a very big difference in the taxes at all for that because we could roll that into there too.
So what's the downside of paying that off?
Letting the money sit in your general fund. Our, I think, well, our policy says that you always want to have at least 40% of your general fund budget. So right now, our general fund budget is 1,125,000, and you want 40% of that to go forward into the next year, to make sure you want that in your cash fund when the year ends, to make sure you have enough money to pay your bills so you get your, your tax, your first tax payment in June and your LGA in July. We're at 150% right now. So we have about 150% in our cash fund. So we have the money to pay it off and save the city the interest. If, if it's a callable bond, I have to call, I have to call the bank and see if it's considered a callable bond.
That makes sense to me.
So if you want, I can call them then and ask them.
And with all the things we have going and all the things that people want us to do, I don't think we can start the process off shorting ourselves. I think we need to leave that 100,000 in there for the 52.83% tax rate.
You know, we'll know more, as I said, we'll know more as it gets closer, what our neck, our taxable net capacity is. You know, if I'm way over on this and it's gonna make the tax rate at 54 or 55%, you know, then it's something you can consider as your final. I don't think I'm way that far off. I mean, last year, I think I was off by like 50,000 or 40,000 or something when my estimate were out of the 2 million. So I don't think it's way off. But we'll know later on. Otherwise, you're looking at a little over, what, 1%? It was 51.6 last year. You're going, you would be going at 52.83, so you're looking at 1.2% difference in your tax rate. I guess, I mean, if that's the general consensus, then that's what we can present. We won't present all three of them at the council meeting. We just present one. If that's your general consensus, we would present that and we would put, we don't, we would put this part in the packet and just one of these. We don't put these tax pages in there at all. Probably put in the, the taxable capacity sheet and then this one other page that was in here that said how to calculate your taxes. That would be already put in the packet. But we just need to know, need to know your thoughts, what you, you know, what the general consensus is so we can make sure we put the right stuff in there.
I personally like the, kind of the middle of the road plan myself, but.
Middle road plan? Do you guys have, do you guys have this? Have you ever guys seen this? This was passed last year before you were, were you on the council, you were on the council last July, weren't you? So you probably, we'll get you guys one of these.
Yes, sir.
No, we'll, we'll copy one and give it to them for, with your next council packet. It's got everything in there for the roads for the next.
The 10-year road plan?
Yeah, yeah. As to what needs to be rebuilt. They've got it all laid out by year or so. It says, you know, how much we're gonna spend in 2022. That's where I got the 70,000. And then if you just go a little bit further in everything, it says on the top of each page which section is designed for which years. So.
When they, when they did the survey with that, they even brought pictures out too of.
Yeah, there's, there's some pictures in there that's actually the road. It's a pretty good, it's a, it's a good plan for budgeting by, so. We'll get you guys a copy of it.
To add back to the packet?
I think we can add it to our council packet, or not to the council packet. We'll just throw it in there and blow a second delivery to them. Or take it to the council meeting with you or something.
I know this got asked earlier this year by some citizens. Even with this increase, we're still pretty much one of the lowest in the county as far as tax rate, correct?
Yeah, we're not real high.
Yeah, it's pretty low. And I think just to the point of where I think we should be, I think that we should be looking at adding that, that 1.22% just so we can get an idea. And if it is something that is, you know, we're above what we think, then we can re, always bring it down. I think that, that, that should be the discussion rather than trying to come in too low and then we're scrambling at the end. I think we have a lot of projects ahead of us with a lot of things that we want to fix, a lot of things that we're building in this area. So I think it's beneficial. You know, if we can cut out some of the debt too with some of the banks that we have, it would be beneficial as well.
And when does that decision have to be made?
So your final decision will be made at your December council meeting. So this one, this proposed levy, you'll make at your September council meeting. And then we'll certify with the county, and then you'll all get your tax statements in the mail that says this is the proposed tax levy and how much it'll affect your property. And here is the public hearing date for the truth and taxation hearing, which is at your council meeting. And then anybody that wants to come to the council meeting can come to the council meeting and speak on all their taxes. It's not very often that it happens, but once every while, you might get one person that'll come in. We had one person come once and told us his taxes were too low.
Did you fix it for him?
But, yeah. So then, I mean, at, at that point, if we felt that we didn't need that much or if something changed, or like I said, if the, if I'm way off on the tax capacity and it's gonna be a big effect on everybody's taxes, it might be something you want to consider maybe lowering for the year, you know, next year. We have a lot of building permits to get this year, so. And last year in 2021, we had quite a few, so it'll catch up again with the tax capacity.
And when did you say you were gonna know about the official tax capacity yet?
They usually know by about October. They send out the proposed to us. So when we do, we'll do another workshop in November with everything, including all the enterprise funds with all the, you know, revenue and expenditures, because in December, you have to prove the full budget and levy for the year. So we'll do another one in November before your, your December meeting, and we'll know by then what the proposed is. And then the final actually comes in real close to, to the proposed. Once in a while, they have a few things they have to tweak, but it's usually pretty much right on, very little change. So we'll, we'll have a really good idea by then of what it's actually at.
Yeah, kind of with David and Tom on this one. Go down, can't go up.
Yep.
And a little, a lot of pain.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the, the two differences, I mean, we're taking a dollar and change.
Yeah, if your taxes are extra, your house payment is pretty minimal.
One less pack of gum for each month.
You find gum for a dollar?
No, but I'm just, you know, putting it in that perspective.
Okay, well, if that's the general consensus, we'll go with the 100,000 presented at the council meeting.
We can read it now from you.
Yeah, I'm kind of with you guys on that, just in case, I guess. As long as we can rock it if you need them. It's not a huge jump.
So we'll work on that. There, there will be a resolution with this also because when we certify the proposed levy to the county, we also have to certify all of the debt service. And so some of it, we changed some of it. Some of what we don't need is like this one where they're, they've got 300,000 that's been certified to them, and we only need 130. We'll do a resolution to lower it. The 1 for County Road 12 when it's done now. They had it at zero, but we actually need because they collected one year earlier, they said, but with everything that went on over here with, only we did County Road 12, there was two bonds and someplace along the line, the levy did get started when it was supposed to, so we still need 109,000. But that's the last of it now. So there's all different, there's, there'll be a couple resolutions for when we certify it to the county.
Okay, and what about the impact of paying that bond off? That's not really gonna be noticed because it's gonna be absorbed somewhere else, right?
Yeah, if we pay it off, if we get that, if we can pay it off this year, we can take it off a year at the final, then we can just put it into our capital improvement for this year. And then next year, we'll slide it into the debt service.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll certify the downtown bond, basically. Hey, that's it.
Sounds good. Clear.
Motion to adjourn.
And make a motion to adjourn. Uh, what's second?
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, Mr. Paul.
Aye.
We adjourn, motion passes five zero.
Is that ready?
Are you good?